Morning, it's nine AM. I'd like to call and welcome everybody to the April fifteenth work session of the Limestone County Commission. Before we get started this morning, we have several proclamations here for telecommunicators week. And like I said, this is April fourteenth through the twentieth is National Telecommunicators Week. So it's all, everybody stand up here. And I know we have representative here from about, we have Athens Limestone Hospital, nine one one, Limestone County Volunteer Fire, Athens PD, Ardmore PD, and our own Limestone County Sheriff's Office. So if we mind, everybody, let's stand up here, we'll do all these. Because I know some people have to go on to the city. I know the city's doing something at nine thirty, so. We got Sheriff's Office, we got Athens. We have anybody from, we have Ardmore here, we have nine one one here.
Nick, how you doing this morning?
Good.
Well, you know, we do this every week. And like I said, this area is an honor to do this because, you know, a lot of people know that telecommunications are the first line of defense when you go into, you know, most cases. You know, they call it, this is a good accurate information that we give, helps our deputies, helps with fire, helps rescue, helps everybody else. So all these proclamations will read the same, but we'll change the one line any time. When emergency and response are critical to the professionalism of life and preservation of property, the safety and emergency responders is dependent upon these guys, men and women, to come out and answer the phone. So the telecommunications are the first line of response and the most critical contact of our citizens have with emergency services. Telecommunicators are simply the most vital link in any emergency we have out there. And I know when they answer the phone, I've been up there many times, that phone, you know, people go to the phone hysterical, try to get them calmed down. So these people keep a real response. I mean, they're real actors over here. So we want to just, and that's been said, Limestone County Commission declares April fourteenth through April the twentieth of twenty twenty-four to be National Telecommunicators Week. And we are honored to represent y'all with this proclamation and thank y'all for the service y'all provide. So we have Limestone County Sheriff's Office, there's the sheriff, we have Ardmore PD, anybody here from Ardmore PD? Athens PD, chief, there you go. I keep wanting to say big A, the chief.
Hey, that's good.
Limestone County Fire, Commissioner Galloway, he's been many years in that. So we're going to thank him for their service, nine one one, there's Mr. Miranda Wallace, nine one one director, and we have everybody here from the hospital. But everybody, this call is lined up here, get us a picture made and.
Somebody else go with them.
Yeah, y'all come on around up here with the line up, thinking, well, we'll thank all y'all for your service and. Come on in here.
Beard to the back.
There's Nick, you want me up here? Everybody squeeze in, we like each other. Athens Fire, stand up here, we got to give Athens fire, we're just going to ask the fire department in here to take them. We're going to the city next. Go to the city next, until you.
Ready? One, two, three. I'm going to take several, so just hold it. Stay there.
So I can deal with that one. There you go.
So once I was completed, I got a deal and a.
Nice. Nice, I, yeah. Sunday morning, five.
Everybody, it's always great to start out the meeting with something great like that. Those guys and ladies, they do a great job. So thank them for their service. I know all of y'all thank them for they do what they do.
Yep.
Ellen, do we have any more public comment?
Mark Hurd.
Mr. Hurd, how you doing this morning?
Hi, how are you?
Doing great.
First of all, I'd like to tell Commissioner Townsend, we appreciate him backing us during the grievance process that we did last week. But that's one thing I wanted to try to comment on is now that we know the policy was, was broken, but we better understand the policy, I would like to ask that, since the chairman has the authority to do it, to go back and pay the people that worked for the inclement weather. But it's not about the pay, it's actually about the policy. And the biggest thing is we would like the policy to be changed. And through talking with the sheriff, you know, we find out that every one of the commissioners in January told him that the policy wasn't right and has continued to tell him that the policy needs to be changed. So I'm asking that y'all change the policy, make it fair for everybody, you know, and do it sooner than later. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you.
Jacob Lamar.
How you doing this morning, Jacob?
Good, how are you, sir?
Doing great.
Kind of, kind of piggybacking off Sergeant Hurd, I mean, Commissioner Townsend, again, thank you for what you've done for us. That goes a long way. I really appreciate it. We're getting back to it. I mean, we all know there was absolutely nothing fair about that. I mean, we need to do something to make it right. Whether it's fix the policy, pay, pay and fix, it's, it's, it's got to be fair. I mean, because, like I said, in the grievance process, what's going to happen when our guys don't show up? Who's going to run the place? Nobody. I mean, we have to risk our, our personal vehicles to make it on time. And for, for what? I mean, we held up our end of the deal. We all showed up. All I, all I'm asking for is make it right. I mean, Commissioner, Chairman Daly, you've got the authority according to the policy to make it right. I mean, we need to, we need to do something to make it right from now on. I mean, because, like I said, we can all see that this, this wasn't fair at all. I mean, no matter what side of the fence you're on. And thank y'all.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Exertis Wall.
Hello, Mr. Wall, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Doing great.
In the words of the late, great Ronald Reagan, I've always felt the nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." Ronald Reagan was known as a great communicator, and he liked to make jokes. But I would like to talk about some of the ways the government wants to help Limestone County. Because this is the federal government. Of the time limitations I have today, I am selecting just a few. There are many more. Fences, and this is a direct quote from an ADCA document, fences in flood-prone areas change the way floodwaters move across the landscape. During floods, fences can act as a flow boundary and cause changes in localized flood levels, redirect the direction of flow, collect flood debris and cause blockages, and be damaged by floodwaters and subsequent fence debris may cause damage to other structures. Inappropriate fencing can cause significant disruptions of the passage of floodwater, particularly when fences are aligned, are aligned across the direction of floodwater flow. I first became aware of the issue with fencing because Minnesota DNR petitioned FEMA for an exemption for barbed wire fences. I can find no such exemption in any Alabama documents, and I have confirmed that there is not an exemption with ACEA, and they are very concerned about this as well. There are many creeks in Limestone County with more than one cattle fence across them, and owners will have to be fined or imprisoned if they fix these fences without a permit. That's mandatory, it's not up to the county, which there is no guarantee they can get from FEMA, and this is a paraphrase here because it's spread across a lot of different areas in the FEMA documents. Unless specifically exempted, installing a mailbox or flagpole without a permit is subject to mandatory daily fines and/or imprisonment. Again, there is no exemption noted in Alabama documents. Other things you can't do in a special hazard flood area, if not exempted, include replacing your roof. The thing about this is, depending on the existing height, you may have to raise the first floor of your house if you need a new roof. You may be fined just for having a damaged house, even if the damage is not flood-related, i.e. fire or wind. And this is direct quotes from two different sample letters in the ADCA files, all publicly available. City staff will be inspecting homes, and these are letters that are sent out to community members. City staff will be inspecting homes throughout the community for evidence of substantial damage. This evaluation is required by our flood plan management ordinance. These inspections apply to all structures within the 100-year floodplain, whether they're damaged or not. The inspectors will require approximately fifteen to twenty minutes to inspect for exterior and interior damage. This is a follow-up letter to be sent to people whose houses are determined to be damaged. The city has determined that your structure received damages exceeding fifty percent of the pre-damage structure value as a result of the flooding that occurred September third and fourth. Structures located within the 100-year floodplain that receive damage of any origin whereby the cost of the structure would equal or exceed fifty percent of the structure value must be brought into compliance with ordinance. For residential structures with more than fifty percent damage, the structures must either be removed from the floodplain or have the lowest level, including the basement, elevated at or above 100-year flood elevation. Failure to comply with this requirement will result in daily fines and/or legal action by the city against the owners of the structure, end quote. I know you're concerned with the county's eligibility for infrastructure grants, as am I. I would like to get a list of the agencies and grant types that you would like to have checked out. This way, we can check out, contact the relevant agencies for clarities on this issue. It appears to me after looking at the FEMA grants, that all four types of FEMA grants that they, FEMA offers directly are hazard mitigation grants and not infrastructure grants for infrastructure repair or replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
I appreciate you letting me go over a little.
No problem, but let's finish up.
Thank you.
Jeff Sads.
How you doing, Mr. Sads?
I know, I want to appreciate all y'all for letting us speak on this again. And y'all have been beat over the head about this inclement weather stuff. But I want to give you a different view of how I kind of look at it. I've been with the sheriff's office for over ten years now. And when I'm out in public and people know where I work at, I'm proud to say I work at the sheriff's office. And in law enforcement, as y'all know, we have a very difficult retention on people. We always have people coming and going. But one of the great things that I've always been proud of is anywhere I've worked, I've always felt like I was being taken care of. With the way this policy went, it was a slap in everybody's face, and it makes us feel like y'all don't have our best interests in heart. So I hope you will really look at this program, or the, the policy and make changes that needs to be made. Because we constantly have people coming in, and who wants to go to work for somebody when you feel like they don't have your best interest in it? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sads.
No further comments.
Thank y'all for your comments today, and appreciate everybody being here. Today on the commission meeting, we'll have, first thing will be the minutes to approve, and you know, we have April first minutes, and then we also have April second and third, and that was the special call meeting. Anybody got any discussion with any of the minutes we're going to have to approve today? All right, second on there will be claims in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Anybody got any dispute with any claim? All right, conflicts of interest, anybody got any today? Public hearing, we'll have none. Resolutions and orders. First on here will be to approve a resolution authorizing the chairman to execute all documents necessary to obtain financing through Bryant Bank and for the commercial loans, including but not limited to the, to the note and security agreements for the following items. And this will be for four Kenworth T eight eighty with twenty-eight yard side load dump garbage beds, and then to be one Kenworth four eight eighty, four eighty, twenty-two yard automatic side loaded truck. And the amount financed will be one million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. In terms, payments will be three years, and it will have a balloon payment at the end, and the interest rate is four point seven five. And again, and the balloon payment will be the guaranteed trade-in amount that they gave us on the trucks. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. Moving on, contracts, agreements, and grants, and MOUs, be to approve a contract between Tarkog and the Limestone County Commission to maintain existing insurance and benefit consulting program known as the State Health Insurance Program, which is better known as SHIP, and, and it'll be effective April first of twenty-four through March thirty-first of twenty-five. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, next on here will be to improve an employment agreement between the Limestone County Commission and Daphne Ellison, and this will be for a one-year contract. This will be April fifteenth to twenty-four through May thirty-first to twenty-five. And this is for the letter that we're going, that Eddie had gave us the other day for Daphne to become her year to help with training for the, people that take school plus to go help with our safety program. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, number three will be to apply for a Let's Lea grant. And this grant here is existing with training on sex crimes investigations through Southern Police Institute. And the grant would apply, would supply training for three law enforcement officers. It would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split. The cost for, that would, the cost would be for twenty-seven hundred dollars, which would be nine hundred dollars each. And we have done this in times past. This is a great program, and the sheriff has never had reached out about doing this. I know Caleb used to do it, I think, when Caleb was there. So they applied for this grant in the times past, and it'll get received. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, so moving on, no discussion with that. Budget revisions, we have one budget revision, it's fifteen thousand dollars. This is something we do every year for the hazardous household waste pickup. It's for the, where they'll do, I think they do it at the high school again. I think it's in May.
Middle school.
Middle school, yeah, it used to be high school. I think it's in May, the, sometime in May, it'll be, will be advertising coming up. But it's where you can bring all hazardous household material and, and, like I said, it's fifteen thousand dollars, and we have done this several years in the past. So anybody got a discussion with that? All right, emergency purchases, we have non-board appointments. We have three board reappointments. And this here is for the, this is for the rural village, and this is just reappointments of the three gentlemen that's on the board. It's, will be a report to submit to the, to the following, to the governor's office for reappointment. This is actually, half the board members are from Limestone County, half of them are from Lauderdale County. And this is for the TVA, it used to be TVA, but it's Elk River Development Association, that's the rural village, and plus they have some land over in. But it's Tracy Compton, Curtis Hollinsworth, and John Marsh. And the Curtis Hollinsworth, we just had actually appointed him a few months ago to finish a term for Mickey Lay. Well, Mickey Lay had, so he, we actually just appointed him a few months ago. It was just, and Tracy Compton is the mayor of Elk Mountain, and John Marsh is a resident of Elk Mountain. So it's all three Elk Mountain. Anybody got a discussion with any one of the three? No discussion, we'll be sending that letter on. Award of bids, we have none. Personnel, policy of staffing actions. First on here will be to approve to hire Christina Luter as a building and maintenance service worker, and this will be effective April fifteenth to twenty-four. Anybody got a discussion with her? Number two will be to approve to hire Allison Appleton as a revenue clerk, and this will be effective today, April the fifteenth. Anybody got a discussion with her? All right, number three will be to approve to amend the staffing plan under District Four, and this will be to reflect three equipment operator threes, four equipment operator twos, and this change should have been made back in October. I guess it slipped with a crack somewhere. But it's be when Matthew Sanders, well, he was promoted from an equipment operator one to equipment operator two, when he got his CDL license and stuff, and we just didn't get that, we slipped that one through the cracks, so.
Just change it.
All we're doing is changing, you know, he's, he's moving from one to a two because we got CDLs, he got moved up, so. Anybody got a discussion with that?
So this will be retroactive?
Yeah, he's already, he's already.
He's already been.
He's already equipment operator two, it's just the staffing plan didn't reflect it that way, so. It was supposed to have been changed when the staffing plan was changed, when he got his CDL license. So anybody got a discussion with that? All right, merit increases, we have several listed below. Anybody got any discussion or with anybody on a merit increase? Engineers report, Hunter, or Heath, whoever's doing it today.
I got, I guess I'll, I won the short straw there, Mr. Chairman. We got three subdivisions for y'all today. Two miners, first one meant Highland Village, North Phase, replats of lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, three for preliminary and final, creating one lot in District Three. Then JT Crawford subdivision replats of lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, another miner for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Two. And then Madison Preserve, Phase One, it's a major for final approval, one hundred and thirty-seven lots in District Three, approximately one mile west of County Line Road on Ohio Highway twenty. And then we also have in the other packet, it'll be the twenty twenty-four payment schedule. I think Mayor Mark wanted to talk to everybody about it. I think everybody's good with it. But if there's any questions, comments, or concerns there?
Anybody got any comments or concerns with the payment schedule?
Payment crew's in District One today. Hopefully going to get Mitchell Loop paid, and then it's depending on what the weather does, move over to Danny's district and get to work over there on a couple of patch and areas and whatnot he's got. And then also I'm hoping Rogers Group moves in either tomorrow or Wednesday to begin paving on Nick Davis Road.
Nick Davis?
Yes, sir. So that's all I've got. Anybody got any questions?
Anybody got any questions for the H and H crew? Ethan, huh?
I, sorry. I live right next to the property you're talking about doing on property, where those property there. What exactly are you doing? Because my letter only said seventeen and eight. Can you list it all?
Um, ma'am, just, we'll be done here in just a second. We get done, we'll have a fifteen-minute break, and you can talk to him between the time. It'll be, we'll be done in just a few minutes, and you can talk to him between the time. We like just a few items being done, and we'll be right there. So, all right, moving on. You got anything else for, okay. All right, other business, we have remove the following item from inventory will be a Canon copier machine. This is from the probate officer, image runners, from the probate office, this is removed from inventory. Any comments with that? And the number two on here will be to approve to move our next commission meeting from Fri, from Monday the sixth to Friday the third because of the conflict with the engineers and the administrators meeting that they have coming on. So that will be moving that meeting back to a Friday versus Monday because of that. Anybody got any, and I know that two, two other people here, and I've got to go down actually to that meeting on the third, so. Anybody else got anything else? And then, other business, while we're on other business, there's a couple of items here I know that's, when they talk about. One of them is, is the, you know, just quick brief, I know the recycling building has been kind of a, you know, the, we have got a grant to build a recycling building. I know ADM has put six hundred thousand dollars into our recycling building. You know, I know it's hard that we, you know, it's, it's come over a little from that grant process, you know, what it's going to cost us. I mean, I mean, probably, you know, we've had a couple of bids of nine hundred thousand, one of about a million. Though, I mean, you know, ADM is putting six hundred thousand in it, and I mean, we won't take some money from the public building fund to, you know, to, you know, get the, because that's just a, because it's just a bid cost. I mean, it's probably going to be, also just a projection cost. It may run, it'll probably run under that a little bit. We hoping to get somewhere around eight hundred thousand, is that right, Hunter?
So the project budget that we've got so far would be what their estimated cost is previous to bid. So therefore, you know, they don't want to go over the number that the bid's actually going to come in at. So those numbers are a little bit inflated. So I mean, eight hundred thousand is, is probably, is as close as they were willing to go without possibly going over that number. So I mean, it could even be less than eight hundred thousand dollars. We just, we won't know till we bid it for construction. So that's what the cost estimate is.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to get into recycle business, I think we need to go all the way with lock and key and go the full amount instead of just piecemealing it right now with, with just grant money. Let's just go ahead. We're getting a full building, operational building for a third of the cost. So I, I feel like we'd be better off to just go ahead with a lock and key program and, and go with it.
And that, that would be the nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollar.
But it would, but it would.
Construction estimate that we got.
But it probably will not be quite that much. Yeah.
I can't, I can't answer that. I mean, it's, you know, I can't truthfully say no sure that it won't. That's just the, that's the, the construction estimate that we've been given. We hope that the bid comes under that.
I mean, I want to thank ADM for believing in our program to invest in us. So I mean, you know, I hate, I hate to build a building and not have the loading dock and not, we're trying to figure out something to cut costs that we're not trying to put anything in. But I mean, you know, most, most grants are, even the one with the sheriff's office here, you know, was seventy-five, twenty-five match. So if you put, you know, if you put twenty percent at six hundred, that's eight hundred. So I mean, I mean, I think we ought to at least do a twenty percent match or something like that. I mean, that's just my per take on it, but.
Do we need to spend the rules?
No, it ain't got to be done, no. It's just, no, this is just a, this is just to move forward with that, with that program. That would be the, and I know Drew has been working hard on it, and we actually have planned, you know, a little groundbreaking thing for Wednesday, isn't that right, Drew?
That's right.
And we're going, we're going forward with a, with a project regardless if we put any money in it or not. But I hate to build a building and not put a bathroom in it. You know, that's what we're at. We're looking at trying to cut bathrooms out and things like that to make it.
I was going to ask, I know Mark said he was going to go back and just say, hey, give me a price for a six hundred thousand dollar building.
So yeah, the lowest, lowest price that we received was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And that is a, that's a, that's a shell with a concrete slab and an, and an above-grade loading dock off to the side of the building, not with a, you know, not with a backup, you know, like an at-grade dock, well, a low-grade dock, excuse me.
And I don't know how, and I don't.
Office space, there's, I mean, that's like I said, that's literally just a metal shell, one roll-up door, two walk-through doors, just no, no, no plumbing, no office space.
Well, I know our recycling program's been pretty, pretty good up where we got it right now. I mean, we get a lot of interest up there, a lot of traffic. So I mean, I.
Well, I mean, on another.
It's gone really good.
Well, on one note of it is, I mean, if you keep, if you keep a hundred tons out of the landfill ever.
That's exactly right.
I mean, you've, you've done a major deal there, you know. So I mean, it's, it's one of those programs that, you know, ADM has put, you know, six hundred thousand into the program. I'd hate for us not to at least entertain a twenty percent match or a twenty-five percent match or something, you know. You know, and like I said, it'd be public building fund money. So it's public buildings. So I mean, it would be, but that's just for y'all to talk, to think about. I just wanted to bring that up. And the next thing is, if any of y'all's got any ideas on that, please share them with Drew or Hunter, because Hunter's been the one running around with the chicken head cut off trying to figure out how to make this building work. So, but I just wanted to give y'all an opportunity if y'all have any input on it, too.
I'm not sure, you know, if we're going to have some construction going on, that we wouldn't be better off hiring, let's say, building superintendent and being our own general contractor.
Well, I mean, we can look at that. I mean, we can, I mean, that's something we can look at.
Just look at the, run the numbers.
But, yeah, I mean, that's, we can definitely look at all options.
We got, how, how many bids did we get on that, Hunter? One or two?
We got, so we only got one complete bid. We got one complete bid and then one bid that was just literally.
People aren't bidding our worth, so we're not getting the best prices. They don't need us. So, you know, I think that's a four, nine hundred square foot building?
It's fifty by seventy-five.
I thought it was seventy by seventy.
Oh, sure.
They may have changed it.
That'd be thirty-eight hundred square feet roughly.
Well, I think, you know, counting the outside loading docks and stuff, you probably.
Yeah. You know, typically, when you get a bid, it's got site work, concrete work, metal building work, just construction codes.
That's what we have with this.
Do we have that?
Yes. Yeah, that's a, the concrete was like a hundred forty-something thousand, the building was a hundred and some odd thousand.
One ninety-five.
Yeah, then you had the site work was like fifty thousand, and it had, it had, you know, all of that cost broke down.
This is just a shell commodity-type building.
It's a pre-engineered metal building.
A pre-engineered steel building.
Yeah, it, it's, everybody in the metal building bui- business could do this.
I mean, yes, sir, I mean, it's, it's a building you could order from Big B Steel or, you know, I mean, any of those, any of those kinds.
But that was considered, you know, the, the conduit for the plumbing and electrical.
And that's it, like I said.
I mean, everything, you know, you got a lot of three-phase power, you're gonna have to, I mean, that was just a, like I said, it'd be a lot of conduit, and it'll be a lot of other stuff in the building.
Utility connections, you know, sewer water.
Y'all are welcome to get with Hunter, look over it and see what y'all think about it. But anyways, and another thing is, I know that we've all considered the, you know, the one thing, we gotta, you know, had a couple people speak on, what's that? Inclement weather policy, and I know, um, we've kinda all bounced around some ideas and this, that, and the other. I would, we need to, like I said, if we're going to address it, we need to address it in some form or fashion, so, um, and not, not that, I mean, we gotta have a, I want all of y'all to, to get together and come up with an idea. We can pick the best from each idea and try to go with it, because I know, uh, um, you know, I've, I know that, you know, there's, it's a lot of different formulas in this, and I mean, one of the conversations was, is, well, wouldn't be fair, well, I mean, you know, theoretically, we closed on Friday, and Monday rolls around, and we close two hours, open two hours late on Monday. If the courthouse would have opened Friday, and Saturday and Sunday, we would have been closed those days more than likely. So I mean, there, you know, the fairness is gonna, you know, you're always gonna have some of these situations that where, you know, that you can't completely 100% you know, fair with the way that things work out, so. I mean, 'cause Saturday and Sunday was just as test, as it's come to work, as Monday through, as Thursday, we only was four-day week, so I mean, you got a scenario there too. So I mean, I want y'all to evaluate everything and what y'all think about, and, you know. Um, I know we haven't got anything to vote on today, but I had made the.
I think that, you know, we've been doing this procedure for whatever, 25 years, I think we discussed that several times, you know, and it's, seems like that's kinda worked on the, on the procedure part, it wasn't in the policy, we, we figured out that it wasn't in there. But I think on the other, I mean, why can't, well, just go back and continue to do it like we've been doing it? It's kinda what I was, had on my mind. And just make sure that night shift is taken care of, 'cause you know, we've kinda been, we've let night shift kinda slip through the cracks on that. You know, we closed the courthouse, and they drove across snow and ice, and then the night shift had to go to work across the same snow and ice. So, you know, and they wouldn't have got paid according to what, the way we've paid in the past, is that correct?
Well, it has been two, three different ways, and I think that's what got us to where we're at today.
I think so, too.
Because, I mean, I think that's what's got us to where we're at today. Um, I know I've looked at, you know, you know, there's, I've looked at policy to where we paid, you know, if anybody else was, you know, if you worked those hours, time and a half paid for something or some, you know, just something to that effect, you know, whatever. I mean, we need to figure out something and go with it, um, so, but I had, um, told the sheriff that what we'd do is, is not unless something majorly happened, um, we would not close any county office until we got this figured out in some form or fashion. I mean, not unless it was a dire, dire, dire emergency, so, um, it was a, so I think, um, like I said, if we need to evaluate this and, you know, I'd like to have something by the next meeting to.
I would, too.
To kinda, to kinda even, you know, if we, if we stay with what we got, or we go back to the previous, or we adopt something new, or whatever we do. I mean, it's just, we need to figure out, and all, everybody, I want everybody to, I'm tasking all y'all with an idea to, to, to come up with y'all's idea, what y'all think is fair, and, and we'll kinda maul through that, let Drew maul through it and go from there, and that'll kinda get us to where we're, the future will look like, so. Alright, I know that's a, but that's where we're at, anybody else got any other business y'all want to discuss? Alright, so we will recess for 15 minutes, and I know the lady right here wants to speak with Hunter, so, and we'll be back here, we'll just say, um, uh, we'll go, we'll go 50, that'll be 90, to give her a little more time.